...the Douglas Zoni Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, December 9th at 7:05 PM. Before we start, just an announcement to make that Mrs. Holmes did resign last month from this board and she and her husband have relocated outside of Douglas and I just wanted to thank her for her dedicated service to this board and to other boards she's served over the years and she always came to the meetings prepared and she had near-perfect attendance record and I just want to thank her for her service.
I'm with you on that.
Yeah, good.
I sent her a fruit basket.
That's true. I ate some fruit.
No, you didn't.
You don't want to be anywhere near that for it, I don't think.
The first agenda item is...
We have to do an attendance but minute keeper.
Oh, okay, so, all right, why don't we do that?
Well, because you...
It's on Zoom, yeah.
You got people.
Yeah, okay. So, I'm Dan Heaney.
Mike Fitzpatrick.
Ron Forgit.
Louis Tiziano.
Sean Holland.
Okay, those are the members that are... And John Bombar is present by Zoom, through Zoom. So, the first agenda item is continued public hearing for Rebecca Laramie, case number 2020-04, 17 Huff Road. And today, we received a request from Ms. Laramie's attorney looking to get continued till our January meeting, which is on January 6th at 7:00 PM. So, I guess we need to approve their request for a continuance. They missed the filing deadline, is what happened, so now Maria will have opportunity to advertise it properly.
So, move.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick to approve the continuance. We have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Holland. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the continuance is... We need to go around again because the meeting's partially on Zoom, so aye, Dan Heaney?
Mike Fitzpatrick, aye.
Ron Forgit, aye.
Louis Tiziano, aye.
Sean Holland, aye.
John Bombar, aye.
Okay, great, thank you. The... I'm just gonna skip ahead just a little bit on the agenda because that one was continued and we're gonna have a discussion with North Brown LLC. I know they have some other participants as well. And overall, there were a couple of loose ends we were just trying to get an update on, I guess, as a primary purpose. So, one was the Cistern and then there was a water and sewer crossing that there was questions about, so... Tim, do you want to join us or...
Yeah, I'll come up.
Yeah, there's a chair right there, pull it right up.
Yeah.
Not if we keep our six feet, I think we're all good.
Great, thank you.
I think Bill's with us on...
Yep, Bill's there.
Okay, good.
Yeah, and so is Tim Barlow, developer for North Brown.
Okay, thanks, Tim.
With us tonight, actually, is Ed.
North Brown. And we have...
...our other attorney on it, Cor.
Okay, great. So, I don't know, Tim, do you...
And there as well was Stuart, Mr. Chairman, by Liana Cork, counsel for the developer.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if Ed wants to go or he would like me to give the...
Yeah, Ed, do you want to?
Yeah, as I understand it, Bill was looking for an update on the project with respect to the fire Cistern and the water sewer crossing. And as I indicated to the chairman at the last meeting, I would forward an update, a written update to the board, which I extend to Bill on the 24th, I guess, on those issues. And I had asked Maria to forward that email to the board. I don't know if the board has that email.
It appears, Ed, that just a couple of us have it, so if you don't mind going through that correspondence.
On the fire Cistern, as I understand it, the remaining issue is the fire Cistern easement. And we've been speaking with town council for quite a while. He had some comments to the easement that had been proposed to him some time ago, probably over a year ago, in June, and then Alana had responded to that and then he had responded and then there was a further response in September and we were waiting to hear further from the town as to that issue. He did respond this afternoon around 5:00 with some issues. So, there are some issues that apparently still need to be resolved. Apparently, the town would like us to pay for water that might be used for fire protection, which we think is unusual, given that everyone else gets fire protection for free in town. But, so, we're working through that. The other issue was the water sewer crossing and there was a question, there is a crossing of the water line with the sewer line that's actually in Phase 3 of the project, it's necessary in order to service Phase 2 of the project. And the town has some questions about how that was designed and we had presented the design to them last winter. And finally, in October, we had an... The town, after going back and forth on it and consulting with DEP, approved the design. So, I think we're all set with that. We would just like to do that work at this point in the spring when the weather might be a little more accommodating and give us a little more lead time in order to get some materials that we will need for the project for the crossing. So, that's basically it. I'm not sure if there are issues that Bill has or that the town has otherwise, but we'll leave that to them.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission?
Yes, go ahead, Bill.
Phil Condiv, town engineer. So, Ed touched on the easement, I agree, I was copied on an email that he and Jay and the attorney for the applicant have been going back and forth, so I'm confident that that will get resolved, I'm not sure the status of it. Regarding the water cost, I know Dan from Stantec is online, he's been integral in the Cistern issue, the formation of the agreement on the front end and the monitoring of the construction. And I think in your packet that I distributed was an email that Dan had forwarded to me earlier today and it talks about the obligations and commitments from the applicant and one of those commitments was to fill water tank. So, in terms of the water cost, I think they have made a commitment for that. With regard to the water crossing, I'm anxious to get... Well, let's go back to the Cistern for a second, if you don't mind, there's two other issues. During those initial conversations, I believe the fire chief was interested in having the Cistern 100% in place approximately halfway through Phase 2 construction. So, on the front colorful maps that are in the package, we'll see that occupancy permits are about halfway through Phase 2. I expected them to be submitting more occupancies and with regard to building permits, I'm near the all of these two things, I think. So, I'm looking for guidance on the board on that for progress. Then there's an issue on the question of the warranty. It's my understanding that a warranty has been provided, but the warranty is valid for a different state than Massachusetts. And, you know, I know there's been discussions with town council regarding the warranty and I believe there's been some ideas floated that, you know, the insurity would be the obligation of the residents or the homeowners association for the period of the warranty. So, if there was a problem, they would be obligated to implement the warranty. They would warrant it, basically. Lastly, with regard to the water crossing, we did give approval on the final design of that. I'm anxious to try and get it buttoned up before the snow fell, but that's not the case. So, I just want to identify that as a priority for moving forward on the next phase. And I don't know if Dan Tatum from Stantec has any... That's my summary.
Yeah, Bill, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Dan Tatum and we work for Stantec Consulting, representing the town. Bill did reference the water filling of the Cistern requirement and there's a specification that was written and agreed to prior to the beginning of the construction and Section I, Part C, says, "Prior to the fire department approving the fire Cistern for use and acceptance, the water level must be filled to approximately 1 inch from the manway connection." So, it's clearly written in the specifications that were agreed to that that is a requirement of the developer, so that should be a non-issue. As far as the warranty goes, the specifications require a 10-year warranty for workmanship and corrosion and they provided a 1-year warranty. And after over a year's worth of emails asking for that warranty, I copied an email that was sent out about a year ago, the 1-year warranty was provided and we asked them for the 10-year, which is specified in Section HIA of the requirement of the regulations. And they came back and said, "Well, the Cistern's already been installed for so long, the manufacturer won't change the warranty from 1-year to 10-year." We back on?
Yes.
I think Pat took care of that.
Excellent, I was very quickly responded, nice job.
Yes.
So, I was talking about the warranty and one thing that we didn't want to see happen was the residents or your local taxpayers kick up a responsibility that was agreed to by the developer, you know...
Mr. Stringy. Doing good.
Good, he forgot that he was on.
Excuse me, sir, you're on a Zoom meeting.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead again, Dan.
Okay. We didn't want to see the taxpayers burden with that responsibility. They are buying a home and, you know, not aware that they're also buying the warranty of our Cistern, so if the warranty couldn't be provided, we would make a recommendation that the developer would provide a similar bond or a letter of credit for 10 years, which is required by the warranty for the replacement of that tank. And it would be for the cost of the tank.
(Music) I don't break, I don't...
Thank you.
Good job, Pat, good job.
Boy, Dan, I don't think they like you, Dan, everybody's hacking you.
This is the only cause that I ever go on that this happens to.
Okay, Dan, let's try it again.
So, I think I finished what I was saying about the warranty, we recommend a bond. And what we can do, we would escalate the 3.5% standard to get our index for escalation for the 10 years. We can get an exact quote from a manufacturer for a delivered 30,000-gallon Cistern, but we would not recommend burdening your local taxpayers and residents with that requirement. So, other than the warranty and filling of the tank, I believe those are the only two things that Bill asked us to comment on.
Okay. Tim, do you want to speak on those two items?
Do I go, Ed, or do you want to go?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Chairman, if I could respond?
Go ahead.
Ed, do you want to respond or shall I?
Let me just address a couple of things first. In terms of the tank, it is full of water. It has been checked and it has been checked by Stantec. The water is up to the level indicated on the gauge and the gauge has been marked according to their specifications. With respect to the warranty, their specifications say, again, nothing that was written writing by the developer, but it was in their specifications that we had agreed to build the tank according to those. And it says a 10-year warranty. We provided a warranty that is 10 years for corrosion. It is 1 year for defects in materials and workmanship, which is standard Xerces warranty and is standard for the industry. Last June, Mr. Tatum indicated that he had spoken to the regional representative for Stantec and they had indicated that to him that they could provide a more extensive warranty, perhaps. And he put us in touch with that representative who we contacted and who we dealt with, as well as our regional representative on the issue of the warranty. And in June, we had a response from them that says, "After review of the specification requirements for the tank of the town of Douglas, it has been determined that the tank warranty..." Again, it was the warranty that was provided about a year and a half ago, "meet this requirement" as outlined in the specification. The tank was approved for manufacturer's shipment and installed as per the specification and there will be no further changes to this tank warranty." So, the tank warranty is the tank warranty. With respect to what Mr. Tatum referenced in terms of the maintenance of the tank, I think all of that is addressed in the easement language that has been discussed between Alana and Jay Talman and I think that will address any concerns relating to that. With respect to what Bill said in terms of the tank being installed and operative, it is installed and it is operative. We provided additional equipment to the town to the tune of about $60,000 in terms of hoses and other equipment in order to utilize it. The fire department tested the tank, the fire department has the key to the tank, the fire department can use the tank, it is fully operational and full of water. So, we think that we've fully addressed that and I'll let Alana address any other issues of concern.
Well, I think that does cover it, but I just want to mention that there are no requirements either in the MOU or the event of the MOU with the town or in the permit itself for any requirement regarding the water, regarding warranty and so forth. And the warranty that has been provided is certainly more than sufficient with respect to what was asked for in the specifications. And as Ed said, the water is in place and the tank has been operational, the Cistern has been operational for almost two full years. And we've been trying certainly to provide the easement that the town is interested in having, which we understand what they want it, and we've been going back and forth now since March of 2019 and we will continue to work with the town, but we're waiting to hear back from the town. Town has outstanding issues that it needs to address and just hasn't done so, which I'm sure will shortly, I hope it will shortly, y'all hope that that will happen shortly. But we have been waiting a long time patiently and will continue to wait patiently. In the meantime, Cistern is there, it's available and it's full of water.
Okay, I just have one question. In the MOU, was it agreed to a 10-year warranty?
The board is aware. This project is fully served by town water with fire hydrants as required by the town. The Cistern was an additional requirement that the town had. When we were discussing the Cistern with the town, we pointed out that probably 80% of the town has no fire protection at all. Fire chief assured us that he would require this for any further projects in town and as far as I can determine, no other project in town has ever been asked to or certainly not required to provide a fire system. So, you know, I think we've met our obligations and again, the easement, I believe, will address any maintenance or repair issues relating to the tank. So, you know, again, I would like to move forward with it, we'll finalize the easement. In the meantime, I would not like to see this hold up occupancy permits because as Bill indicated, we have a number of units that are complete and that are ready for occupancy, including two affordable units that we hope to convey within the next week or so and would certainly not want those held up or any subsequent permits while we try to resolve the easement issue. Again, we've been trying to resolve the easement issue for over a year.
If we could just back up a second, Ed. If my recollection is correct, the reason for the Cistern was because although you had town water, there wasn't enough pressure to fight a fire.
Well, can you...
Is that correct?
Ed? I can't hear.
No.
No. I was not responding.
It was Bill, it was Mr. Condiv who was starting to respond.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, just one comment. With regard to the warranty, it's my understanding that there's a discrepancy in the number of years that were supposed to have been provided and there is not Massachusetts jurisdiction on the warranty that's been provided.
I'm through with Bill Mays by Massachusetts jurisdiction.
That's through a text I just got from town council.
Well, we weren't provided with that.
Certainly, that's not an issue that's been raised before by council with us. Certainly, we can explore that with him. I understand that the company that provided the Cistern is out of state certainly, but still, they provided a warranty, they provided a warranty.
This has been going on for months, years.
It's a standard warranty that they provide, you know, that's what they provide and we have requested change this to it and they indicated that that's the warranty that they provide. And it is a 10-year warranty as indicated in the specifications.
Yeah, Tim, do you have a copy? Okay, thank you.
It's going to be an 8-year warranty. It's been here for almost two years.
Once again, I think the easement addresses all of the issues in terms of maintenance and repair that needs to...
The Cistern's under an operational force.
Bill, Tim just gave me a limited warranty. Is that something you've had a copy, were able to get a copy of?
To be honest with you, I've had our consultants and town council do the right work on that.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, as far as written warranties go, that's really not an engineering item that we definitely need on town council to review that. One of his initial comments back over a year and a half ago was the fact that if there was any litigation related to the warranty, it would have to be resolved out of Michigan, I believe, or wherever the tanks are made. That was one of the initial comments was, and that's a typical comment, that the jurisdiction is within the state of where the product has been installed. And again, I felt that, and I've never had this issue in New Hampshire, we do a ton of these tanks in New Hampshire and we have had Xerces, this same company, write the warranties to reference the state of New Hampshire. And I'm not sure if it's just the delay, whereas this warranty could have been, you know, received at the beginning when they purchased the tank. I don't know if there's additional costs related to the changes to the warranty that aren't agreeable to, but I haven't had these issues before in previous projects. And we did lean on the town council to review that from a legal standpoint as far as where that and how that warranty could be enforced. That definitely goes beyond an engineering topic.
Okay.
And just to respond, it's called conflict of laws and it may be that any kind of enforcement would happen in federal court here in Massachusetts or it might have to go to another jurisdiction. But this is not something that town council has raised with us, we've gone back and forth, you know, for many months now with regards to the outstanding issues relating to the Cistern. And, you know, this has not been an issue. It's something that town council wants to bring to our attention, we're certainly willing to discuss it with them, but we're not aware that that's an issue that's being raised at this time by council.
Okay. So, the issue of the tank being filled by water, that's resolved?
It's full.
It's full?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I know we're all tired of kicking the can down the road here, so maybe in the next 30 days, all parties can see if we can get this resolved. What Tim just gave, he highlighted in the yellow that it's a 10-year warranty, but I haven't read it through, but...
Mr. Chairman, if I could just respond, I understand and appreciate that the board wants to resolve all issues relating to the Cistern and that you want to keep everyone's feet to the fire, but from the developer's perspective, we're waiting to hear from the town. And, you know, you can put this over for 30 days, but in 30 days, we may still be waiting to hear from the town regarding to the outstanding issues. It would be more prudent, you know, from our perspective to not have another status report requested until after the town has responded, because we're waiting to hear.
Are you waiting to hear from town council?
Town council said today at 5:00 that he's been waiting for a response to my emails from September and actually going back to June from the select board and he's been waiting. And, you know, we're in the middle of the pandemic and I'm sure that there are many priorities that the town has and I respect that. But my point is that we've been waiting now for months to hear back and it's really inappropriate to, for the board, the VBA, to bring the developer in and require the developer to respond and get a status report, because the status report is always that we're still waiting to hear from the town to resolve the outstanding issues. If you want to put this over so that within 30 days of, you know, us hearing from the town, that we'll let you know, I'm sure Mr. Condiv can let you know as well, then they can be, you know, request a status.
Who are you waiting to hear from when you say the town?
You.
For us to hear from the town first before we have to come back.
Who in the town? Who in the town are you waiting to hear from?
The select board, because the easement would be with the select board. And so, that's who Attorney Talman has been dealing with.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Lou.
How many gallons is this tank?
30,000.
30,000.
It's 30,000 gallons, okay? And it's made of what?
Fiberglass.
Fiberglass. And, I mean, tell me, what are they scared of? If someone's going to crack it, did you do what you were supposed to do?
Mr. Chairman, I came here with the...
I said it's made of fiberglass, what's the big deal?
Lou, if you could pull that mic towards you.
Spin that mic.
Just pull it towards you.
Just turn it on. There you go.
If it's made of fiberglass, it's only 30,000 gallons. I mean, my swimming pool has more than that.
Mr. Chairman.
Come on, let's face it.
Okay, Mike?
Is the Cistern online now, able to be used?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Absolutely.
All right.
It has been for almost two years.
So, I don't think it's up to us to override town council and the selectmen. If it's up, if it's online and able to be used, waiting another month to find out about this easement issue, isn't going to affect anything. It's not going to hold you up from moving forward. Is that correct, Bill?
As long as we can continue to get occupancy permits, it will not hold us up and we have no problem with the...
Yeah. Can I ask Bill a question?
Continue to try to resolve it with the town.
Okay.
The fire department has a key to the Cistern and has $60,000 worth of fire hoses
that the developer has provided so as to allow the fire department to use the Cistern.
Yeah, and all due respect, that's why I asked if it was able to be used and online, so I guess we established that. Bill, is there any reason why this would be holding up occupancies over the next 30 days?
Basically, I'm looking for final acceptance on the tank, which I don't believe we have. We're looking, it was my understanding there was an issue on the cost of filling the tank, but apparently that is not an issue, is that correct?
Don't kid me.
There's an issue...
No, I understand.
That's what I gathered tonight.
The tank is full, the tank is full. The issue with regard to the cost of the water relates to refilling it in the event that there's a fire later. That's the issue that's being discussed. That's one of the issues that's being discussed, but the tank is full.
Okay. With regard... With regard to the warranty issue is another issue that I have concern about that I'm looking.
Right, but they'll be working that out with Town Council, Bill? They're working that out with Town Council? Is there any reason why we would be holding up any occupancies related to this?
Again, the number of units that have been constructed, it was agreed upon early on that it would be final, finally accepted by the town by the time they were halfway through Phase 2, and that's where we're at.
Where is that, Bill? Tell me where that apartment is.
We had conversations to that, and actually, that was the fire chief, actually.
With who? With the fire plan?
Bill, stop. Stop them from going back a lot.
Does that says that, Bill?
It's 30,000 gallons.
So I'm answering Mike's question, and I would appreciate if the chair had people go to him.
Yep, that's correct. You need to be recognized prior to speaking.
I'm aware of no.
No, go ahead, Bill. Bill, go ahead. Bill, finish.
Any actual agreement or.
Ma'am, you haven't been recognized. Ma'am, you haven't been recognized. Bill, would you finish what you were discussing? Go ahead, Bill.
So that was something that the fire chief had requested during our discussions in the early stages when this board was not present. So is it in writing? I'm not sure if it's in writing, but that's what was discussed. So I, because we're at that point where we're halfway through Phase 2, I wanted to bring it up as a question.
Okay. Ask the chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just be heard.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mike. One second, please. Go ahead, Mike.
Excuse me, ma'am?
We've been trying to make the easement happen and resolve all of these other issues, and we're waiting for the town, and to be told that you can't have occupancy codes because we're waiting for the town to resolve these issues is certainly improper and inappropriate, and it's not anywhere in any permit or any contractual agreement that I'm aware of.
Yes, ma'am. I was just trying to speak, and it's improper and to try to draw me out, but what I'm getting at is I don't think that there's any issue in waiting another 30 days to get Town Council to make this determination. Bill is working with them. We don't have the luxury of talking to them to find out where they're at. I personally don't see any reason why it's going to stop you from getting occupancies over the next 30 days. There's some sort of an agreement out there that, about addressing this issue halfway through, so it's being addressed.
Yep. Okay. Why don't, Ron?
Let's, can somebody put it in a concise, small paragraph of exactly what they're looking for? Because I'm confused right now.
I keep hearing that they're waiting to hear back from the town, but I.
Yeah, so what? But they get the tank. That's the thing. They're waiting to hear from this board.
Can I?
No, I don't think it's this board, it's the Selectmen. Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Ronnie, so the attorney has drafted up the easement, from what I understand.
Excuse me, what attorney?
The town attorney has drafted up the easement between their attorney and the town attorney.
Yeah.
It's now sitting with the Selectmen, they have to sign off on it.
So now you're saying the Selectmen is, are holding this up?
Well, I'm not saying that they're holding it up, I'm just saying that they need to sign off on it. So that hasn't been done yet. What I'm suggesting is we just revisit this in 30 days, but I don't see anything that's going to hold them up for occupancies from now until then. If they've done everything that they need to do up to this point to get the easement done, it's a matter of being signed off if they're in agreement with Town Council, which we don't know that because we're being told it, but Town Council's not here to represent it. I'm in favor of just continuing this for another 30 days, provided it doesn't hold them up on occupancies. I don't see any harm in doing that.
Well, let's reverse it to hear from them as far as what you're saying a minute ago.
Okay. Can I ask them that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Both attorneys, Ed, and I'm sorry, I don't know your name. Do you have a problem with what I just suggested?
Mr. Chairman, through you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Certainly, you know, I appreciate the spirit of that, for sure. The one concern that I have, though, is that, you know, we've been waiting, we've been waiting for a long time for the response. I'm not complaining about, you know, about what the Select Board is doing or not doing, I'm just saying we're waiting, and in 30 days, we may still be waiting. So my suggestion is that we let you know, or that Mr. Kuntz, or we both let you know, let the ZBA know, once we've heard back from the Select Board, and then you can schedule a status reports session. But to come back in 30 days to tell you again that we haven't heard yet is not productive for you or for us.
Could I ask, when was the last time that you made contact with the Select Board?
I'm sorry?
When was the last time you made contact with the Select Board trying to get this resolved?
Well, we're working through Town Council, and there are emails that go back to June. The last set of emails that I sent that have not been responded to are from September. And I got a response from Attorney Talman this evening saying, you know, he was sorry, you know, he's trying to get it resolved, but he just hasn't, you know, it just hasn't happened yet.
So the Town Council, then? Yes, Bill?
Yeah, I would offer to the applicant that if they're having difficulty waiting for Town Council, that they contact me, and perhaps I can move that along.
Okay.
You know, I certainly don't want to hold them up. My goal is to get Stantec off of our contract and get them moving forward, but I'm unaware that they were waiting for anything from the town, so.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak? Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead. John.
John.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
My opinion, this is embarrassing for the town, it really is. Think about what you're asking. Bill, what I'd like you, this is my opinion, this is what I'd like you to do, is not have Mr. Typley contact you, you contact Mr. Typley. How about you walk in the office that's down at the end of your hall, and walk into Town Administrator's office and say, we need an answer in a week of what is going on. You're paying us before us, asking us to hold off on building permits, this guy's trying to make a living through COVID-19. This is enthusiasm we got going here today. And I cannot, I cannot believe we're even talking about this. This is something, a warranty? You buy a washing machine, Dan, where does it come from? China. You got a warranty, yeah, you got a warranty. Doesn't matter where it came from. The repair's going to be done from someone else. This is embarrassing for the board, the zoning board, to have this thing happen today. Now, let's move on. Contact our Town Council and our Selectmen and say, will you finish this, please? This is embarrassing.
John, I don't think, John, I don't think there was any intent by this board or by the town engineer to deny them building permits or occupancy permits, we're just trying to get this resolved, just trying to get it resolved.
No, there isn't, and I'll agree. I mean, if this is a threat to anyone, this is what bothers me. That's what this sounds like. Well, if you don't resist, we're not going to give you the building.
Yeah, I'm not hearing what you heard, John, so I.
I'm hearing what John's hearing.
This is embarrassing.
Yeah. Okay. Why don't we see what we can accomplish in the next 30 days?
Okay, I'd just like to give you one more thing.
Sure, go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, this is the specifications originally from Stantec.
Okay. Thanks, I'll make sure we have it in file.
We met that with that 10-year warranty.
Okay.
The, before we let him escape, that, the water crossing thing?
Yes.
You don't need that until Phase 3 anyways, correct?
Phase 4, actually.
Phase 4?
Three.
Three?
Phase 3.
Okay. And when do you plan on starting that?
Phase 3. This late spring, early summer.
So you'll have that resolved by then?
Crossing's going to be done first of spring.
That'll be done before you start?
Yeah, it'll be completed, yeah.
Thank you.
Just for the record, can we agree that it'll be done by May 1st?
Absolutely.
Okay, just for the record, so we're all on the same page. All right, very good. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Yes.
Can I just get clarification that we can, we can continue to get occupancy permits and building permits will continue to issue until we come back to the board?
Yes. Yeah, well, let's see what progress we make in the next 30 days, but I don't see any, there's be no holdups.
We'll need occupancy permits within the next 30 days.
I'm sorry?
We will need occupancy permits within the next 30 days.
Right, and I think what, what Mike said, I don't, as well, I don't think there's, we're not here to hold you up for the next 30 days, we're just trying to get this resolved. So I would say any permits, occupancy or building that you apply for in the next 30 days.
In Phase 2.
In Phase 2, we're not, we're not suggesting that you be held up on those.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's why I asked that question.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Good night, guys.
Okay. The next order of business is a public hearing for Kenneth Gowan, case number 2020-0529 Laurel Glades. The date of the application is October 22nd. This public hearing was advertised in the Telegram Gazette and posted in the Town Hall, and it read as follows. "The public hearing for Kenneth Gowan is requesting a variance in a rural agriculturally zoned district pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 10, and the Douglas zoning bylaws, Section 9.2 and Section 4.1.3, Table of Dimensional Requirements," excuse me, "for a modification of an approved variance to include relief for a proposed deck porch on the front of the home that would be inside the already approved side setback, 19.5 feet from the property line. The property location is 29 Laurel Glades, map 148, parcel 38." Okay, I'm going to assume that all the certified mail have been returned to the community development, and is the representative for Mr. Gowan, or Mr. Gowan here?
Yes, sir. My name is Byron Andrews with Andrews Survey and Engineering. I'll be representing Mr. Gowan tonight.
Okay. Go ahead, Byron, floor's yours.
Thank you. Mr. Gowan is seeking to build a house 30 foot width on his lot at 29 Laurel Glades. That is, you're probably familiar with it, is on White and Reservoir. It's one of the old lake lots up in that area. Mr. Gowan is also seeking to add a deck to the house facing Laurel Glades, facing the right way, that actually passes through his lot. He is also seeking to, what is now the existing dwelling on the site, the water service will be removed and it will be used as an accessory.
We already did that.
And the deck has an offset to the sidelines of 19.5 feet, 25 feet is required. So we need 5.5 feet. That offset would be on both sides of the property lines as we are putting on centering the posed dwelling in the lot, so both side setbacks will be equal and need equal variances. The existing building, which will be retained for accessory use, also, it's an old building, it's been there for many years, has a side setback of 7.4 feet, a setback to the reservoir of 17.3 feet, a setback to the road of 20.5 feet. So that would require variance as well for those dimensions.
Mr. Andrews, that was actually approved previously, that they would decommission the existing house, remove the water. That was approved months ago.
I'm sorry. I wouldn't, I didn't represent Mr. Gowan at the previous meeting, so I may be a little behind on the things.
Okay.
So I think, from what I understand, the issue is amending the variance to accommodate
his deck is the only issue. I think the house was approved previously, decommissioning the previous, the former house was approved, and I think the only issue was the deck.
Okay, thank you. So as I said, the deck needs a 5.5-foot side setback variance on each side in all ways it meets his requirements, meets the front setback.
You want to pass this around?
Do you have a copy of this?
I got it in the packet.
Second question.
Yes, go ahead, Sean.
All five of us going to be hearing this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, hearing and voting on this case will be myself, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Forget, Mr. Tosino, and Mr. Holland.
What about John?
And Mr. Barbara. Sorry, John.
Lead me up, huh?
Hey, I didn't forget you, John.
Not intentionally. So.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay. So the house and the former cottage were approved previously, and now they want to add a deck on that's going to be 19.5 feet from both sidelines. We approved the house at.
You're going to keep this decommissioned?
We approved the house, I believe, at 18.5 feet last year. Now the deck will be a foot further from the lot line, but still less than the 25-foot requirement.
But it's within the setbacks that we approved already.
Correct. Correct. Any board members have any questions for the applicant?
Well, this sounds, this just sounds like they figured out to add the deck on when they built the house, is what it really sounds like. Or it wasn't on the plans, I don't recall because it's been over a year. Actually, I think it was last, the last winter is when this house was built, and we approved it back then, so I don't take issue with it at all. They're welcome. A deck is a necessity being on a water, I guess I would say, and you know what, it is, it's a small lot, so.
Okay. All right. Is there anybody else that wants to speak on this matter? Is there anybody attending on Zoom that wants to speak on this matter?
No, Chairman.
Okay. All right. Lou?
Is anybody against this?
I am.
You are?
I'm not against it.
Okay.
So therefore, we vote.
Okay. Well, if there's no other.
We need a motion?
We need a motion.
I make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay.
A second, then.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Forget, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick, to approve the deck request.
Be amended, okay.
To be amended according to the plan submitted by Andrews Engineering. Could I just see that, Ron?
So what do you think of that?
And that the deck should conform to the plan drawn by Andrews Engineering. It's a date. Was received by the town on October 22nd, stamped by Byron Andrews, and the deck will be no closer to the side lot lines than 19 foot five, 19.5 feet.
Feet, yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? We have a motion?
Yep, so move.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so we have five, five in favor and one opposed, so the request passes. We'll get the decision drafted, and we'll get it to you, to the town clerk as quickly as possible, Mr. Andrews.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
The next agenda item is a public hearing for Emerson J. Claus III, case number 2020-06. It was posted in the Telegram Gazette as well as the Town Hall, and it reads as follows. "The Town of Douglas, zoning board of appeals, will hold a public hearing at 7:15 on Wednesday, December 9th, in the Douglas Municipal Center, Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass, to hear the following application. A hearing for Emerson J. Claus III is requesting a variance in a village residential VR zone district pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 10, and the Douglas zoning bylaws, Section 9.2. The applicant is requesting a frontage variance from the required 100 feet to allow the construction of a single-family residence on a lot with conforming area but only 40 feet of frontage. The property is located at 19 Caswell Court, map 142, parcel 140." We have a correspondence from the Douglas Planning Board, and they're, they say that they have a, an objection to this variance request. Is Mr. Claus or his representative here?
Henry. Evening, Mr. Chairman. Henry Lane here for the applicant.
Okay. The floor's yours, Henry.
Could you tell me what the planning board wrote in their comment?
Yes, I can. It's a pre-written form, and it just says, "We have an objection to the attached request for the following reason: no hardship."
Thank you. As the application indicates, Mr. Claus is asking for a 60-foot variance from the required 100-foot frontage requirement to allow the development of the lot, or a second dwelling on the existing lot. As you can see from the submission, the lot contains 1.9 acres, so almost four times what's required in the zoning district for a single-family lot. But the way the lot's laid out, it's an L-shaped lot. So in order to comply with the zoning bylaws, we'd have to create another L-shaped lot behind the L-shaped lot to get the area required for a traditional retreat lot. So what we're requesting is entirely allowed in terms of density and location. The variance request really is requesting that we be allowed to keep the open space, extra land with the existing house rather than adding it to the second house. As you can see, the way it's proposed, the house would be located behind and to the right of the existing house. And that's where it can be allowed by rights.
Has that been planned?
Just that the land on the left would have to be added to that house behind the existing house, which would make kind of an awkward lot. So we're basically asking the board to give us a technical variance so we can do what we can do by right without having to create a very awkward-shaped lot. So although it seems like a big request, in fact, it's a relatively minor request. It's just a question of where is the extra open space going to be? Is it going to be attached to the new lot or to the old lot? We prefer to keep it with the old house as opposed to the new house, simply because it's oriented to that side of the property. But furthermore, I want to make it clear that this is basically an attempt to create sort of a family compound. The proposed second lot would be for a family member related to the current owner. So we're not trying to do anything other than to provide some additional affordable housing for a family member and keep the lot oriented in a way that makes sense for the existing property owner. So as I say, it's a little bit of an unusual situation, but what we're really asking is just basically a technicality of deciding where the extra open land is going to be attached. We'd like to keep it attached to the existing house under the existing zoning bylaws. That has to be attached to the new house, which, under the circumstances, is an awkward result, which we'd like to avoid if possible.
Okay. Attorney Lane, it appears to me that this is a very simple reduced-frontage lot situation.
Exactly.
Excuse me?
But you need to increase your area on the new lot to double the zoning, which so that would be a 40,000-square-foot lot. So a little bit of engineering in it.
With the existing house as opposed to adding it to the new house. That's why I'm saying it's not a big request. It's relatively technical. It's just a question of where that extra land is going to result. But who is it going to end up? We'd like to have it end up with the existing house as opposed to having it added to the new house. So it's, you know, the result is going to be the same either way. The exact, the house is going to be located on that lot. There's going to be two houses on the lot. It's just a question of how you're going to allocate the extra space. We think this is a better allocation. Technically, under the retreat lot bylaw, it has to be allocated differently. So it's, as I say, the result's going to be the same. It's just, you know, can you accommodate us with a technical variance so that we can keep the land ownership the way we'd like it organized as opposed to the way the bylaw requires it to be organized?
But a variance request should be a last resort, and it looks to me like some minor engineering, and there's no need for a variance.
Well, as I say, the request is a technical one. We'd like to keep the additional land that the bylaw requires to be assigned to the retreat lot with the original house lot. Just a matter of personal preference for the way it's designed. Otherwise, that lot's going to run, you know, lengthwise behind the existing lot and the existing house, which is, you know, not the optimum result from our point of view because of the way the lot is shaped. You know, if the lot was shaped the opposite direction, we wouldn't be here. But because the lot is shaped, L-shaped, you know, to the left if you're facing the house, that lot, that chunk of land on the left-hand side behind the existing house has to go with the new house as opposed to remaining with the existing house, which is not the result we want. So, you know, that's a simple request. Just how are we going to organize, you know, the result? We'd like to organize it this way. The bylaw technically requires the same land to be organized differently, but it's just a technicality. There's no difference in terms of ultimate density or the ultimate result. It's just a question of where does that extra acre of land go? We'd like to keep it with the existing house as opposed to having to give it to the new house. Really straightforward, really simple. We have to go through this process to, you know, to accomplish that result.
Mr. Tosino?
Yeah, I have no problem with this thing. I mean, the guy's going to pick up the lot. You said it's all family, right, Henry? All family, and this lot's going to have 40 feet of frontage?
Right.
Okay. As long as you remember that. 40 feet of frontage. That's amazing.
But Lou, I mean, my opinion, the variance should be a last resort. And they can make this pork chop lot conform by simply making it a little bit larger.
Yeah, but probably the landlord won't want to give up that much.
Well, if it's family, it doesn't matter, does it?
Yeah, if you're all family.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir?
My name is Dennis Salatiel, and I live at 22 Caswell Court,
Okay.
which is right across the street from the lot they're talking about.
Okay.
And a couple of questions. Have you, in the history of the town, has there been any that this bunch of variants allowed for a frontage for a building?
Well, the town has a, the planning board has a reduced-frontage lot bylaw.
Right.
And that bylaw says that if you have 40 feet of frontage, and you have double the required area, which in this zone, the required area is 20,000. So if they have 40 feet of frontage and 40,000 square feet, they don't need to be here. They just go into the...
Do they have that?
Well, they're trying to...
My understanding is what they want is they want to have a house, they want to put a house on, a smaller frontage, but not, but having the square footage of the land move over, most of the square footage move over to the other house.
The existing home, that's correct. Yep. Did you...
Then that puts the house that they want to put on, if someone in the future ever wants to sell that house, you will then have a higher-density house versus what you have right now. Is my understanding correct?
That is correct, and that's why they're here. They would like to get a variance from that requirement.
But I'm looking at the precedent that you would have going if you, in the future, if you allow that, and for some reason, someone comes along in the future and separates that second house from the first, then the density is going to help.
Well, the second house has to be separated from the first. They're on, they would be on two different lots.
Yeah. Okay. But I understand that. But all I'm saying is the square footage is going to be moved over to the first, to the first house.
Well, it's all in the first house now.
No, but once that, once that new, second house is built, the square footage is going to be all in the first house.
The existing home, if their proposed was approved, the existing home would be on an acre and a half of land, and the new lot, the home on there, would be on a half-acre of land.
And what is the, what is the law state? What is this?
The requirement is a half-acre of land, but you must have 100 feet of frontage. They are only proposing 40.
So therefore, that house will have only a half-acre, a 40-foot?
40 feet of frontage and a half-acre of land.
Is that, is that a, is there an issue with your future people coming in and saying, "I'd like to build on a 40-foot, half-acre land"?
If the variance is granted, then it would be on record, and there would be no issue if it's sold down the road.
What I'm saying is, future people coming in who are purchasing land, would they not say, "Well, you've given this person a 40-foot frontage and a half-acre. Why not me"?
That's always a possibility.
Yeah.
That's always a possibility. But I see another way out.
They've done that.
You know? Well, if they just make this small lot, double the size of it.
Is there precedent?
They don't need to get a variance, and a variance should be last resort.
A half-acre of...
One second, sir.
Put a house on a half-acre with a 40-foot frontage. Have people...
Oh, sure.
Is there a precedent for that?
Yeah, they've done, they've done that, Dan.
I don't think for, not on 40 feet of frontage.
Pardon me?
If I may, I think the gentleman's talking like, we don't have, we don't let people build houses any longer on half acres unless it's in the village area like this.
Correct.
We are required, in the Town of Douglas, to have two acres of land.
Okay.
This is very, very scarce. You know, like Main Street is village area. And Caswell Court is village area. I'm sure there's a couple of other ones that off of Gilmore Street are village also. So this is very unique in a way where it's not going to happen five more times in the next five years.
Well, my concern when I came here was not so much that of the house being built across the street on the 40-foot frontage. My concern is future houses and future requests for having lower, higher density for homes than you have right now. I mean, you allow one today, and tomorrow you're going to allow two, and next day you're going to allow three.
They're all.
Okay.
So that's my concern, is your precedent setting and where that would lead you in the years to come.
Okay. Received. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Attorney Lane, do you have anything else?
I do want to just, you know, reiterate what I said earlier, that the ultimate result is not going to change. The density is not going to change. It's just simply a question of allocating the additional land. And we would expect that if the board votes to grant the variance, it would put a restriction on the existing lot that it not be further subdivided so that the required density would always remain, you know, what is currently required. So that there's no chance that we'd be abusing the bylaw. We'd just be, you know, getting the benefit of it with a slightly different arrangement.
I got a question.
Ron?
The person that's building, wants to build, is that they related to the people?
That's what they said. Yes.
Yeah.
And they don't have any problem? They haven't submitted anything on it?
No. No, they haven't. But we all know that it may not always be family, and it may not be family now. Things change. We've had that happen in the past with people coming in looking for something to take care of their relative, and it turned out it was nothing more than a sale to an outsider. So...
Question?
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
In the event that they didn't get their variance, would they still be able to pursue the option of their reduced-frontage lot?
Absolutely. They could do it and qualify for it.
Yeah, but they wouldn't, there's no problem with them pursuing that if they didn't get this particular variance?
No, they would have the required frontage, which is 40.
Yep.
And they would have the required area if they expanded this. So there would be no reason for the planning board to turn them down. They meet all the requirements. Anybody else that wants to speak on this matter? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I want to close the public hearing. Oh, sorry.
Oh, okay. A motion by Mr. Bumbara, seconded by Mr. Holland, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
You want to roll?
Aye, Dan Heaney.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Ron Forte, what are you doing now?
Because it's on Zoom.
Closing the hearing.
Yeah.
Ron Forget, aye. Louis Tosino, aye.
Sean Holland, aye.
Okay, great. Public hearing is now closed. The board like to make a decision on this case tonight?
I would.
Sure.
Okay. All right, so we know what Attorney Lane has proposed and what they submitted.
I like to make the motion to accept it.
Okay, to approve it as submitted?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Tosino to approve the variance request as submitted, seconded by Mr. Forget. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so there's Mr. Tosino, Mr. Forget, and Mr. Bumbara voted in favor of the variance request. Myself, Mr. Fitzpatrick, and Mr. Holland voted against the variance request, so the variance request is denied. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members?
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Okay. The next item was, just to let everybody know, that the January meeting has been moved to the first Wednesday of the month. And I just wanted to discuss with everybody about the possibility of making the first Wednesday of every month our meeting night. That has been the case for the last 12, 13 years. We met on the first Wednesday of the month. But the town was requiring our former building inspector to be at every ZBA meeting. And he had a previous commitment in another town on the first Wednesday of the month. So we changed our schedule to accommodate him. But he's no longer the building commissioner, and I don't know if the board, how the board feels about making every meeting the first Wednesday of the month, which it's been for years. We change it only for that building inspector, and he's no longer with the town. So I don't know if the board has any preference.
I have no objection to it.
I got no objection.
To the first Wednesday of every month?
Yeah.
Can I make a motion for that?
Yeah, yeah, we definitely should.
I'd like to make a motion to change our meeting schedule to the first Wednesday of each month for 2021.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick and seconded by Mr. Bumbara to change our meeting night to the first Wednesday of every month for the calendar year 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. I will have Maria send out a new...
A new list?
New list with the dates.
Dan, just for some clarity, we got a little confused. We had all six people voting. We should have had five. It wouldn't have made any difference on any of the outcomes, but just...
Yep. That's correct. Yep. So actually, yeah, we have five, only five voting members. I misspoke. So actually, Ron's an alternate, so...
I'm an alternate too.
No, you're not. No.
What do you mean?
Well, you, we had a vacancy.
Have they filled them out?
I don't know.
They moved me out.
They did not?
Still an alternate.
Okay.
Matter of fact, me and Ron are fighting over it because I say he would be a much better full-time member than myself.
Well, if you want to send that to the Board of Selectmen so they know...
I might be, yes.
Well, actually, we should, we should actually talk about it before we close the meeting.
Is that, is that what you...
Louis is up to bat, but that's up to him whether or not he wants...
No, I could have been on the wood, you know, just here that, no. This gentleman here does a great job.
I need some more experience.
Now, we got to go looking for somebody.
Yeah, right. So just for the record, your preference would be to remain an alternate, Lou?
Sure.
Okay. And Ron, you're okay with, I mean...
Right, they take the job.
You participate in every meeting. The only difference is you get to vote on every case.
Yeah.
And Lou votes, would vote as an alternate if one of us wasn't here.
That's right.
All right.
Okay, he'll take it, see?
All right. So I'll just send something to the Board of Selectmen?
Good salesman, good salesman, look.
Of course I am. I know how to do.
You wiggle your way right out of that, Lou.
Okay, so you'll send a recommendation?
Yeah, I'll send, I'll send something to the Board of Selectmen saying, "We discussed it tonight."
Yes.
That we have an opening because Mrs. Holmes resigned, that the board and Mr. Forget were...
And put down, I sent her a basket of fruit.
Mr. Tosino made the motion to appoint Ron to full-time membership.
Okay.
Dan, and put that down, that I did send her a basket of fruit. Mrs. Holmes. You guys think it's a joke.
No, I believe you.
I'm that kind of guy. You don't have to worry, Ron. I'm not sending you a basket of fruit. I'm not sending you a basket of fruit.
Exactly, that's what it was written on.
Okay. All right, and there was one other thing that I wanted to go over. I'm sorry, I have it right here.
I like doing your thing.
Could you just take one of those around? Thank you. And I just want to go over this so that it, it was clear, because there's, there's obviously some, some, and some misunderstandings. The town has a bylaw that says that if any of the members miss four consecutive meetings without contacting the chair, they become considered resigned. So if anybody has any, any attendance problems, if you don't have my contact information, let me know, and I'll certainly give it to you. And if you have what they consider an excused absence, which just means you called the chairman and said, "I can't make it to the meeting," you're all set.
Call or email.
Yeah.
But if not, not as an alternate?
No.
Well, no.
A member's a member.
A member's, yeah, a member.
You're a member either way.
Yeah, but they call me and they tell me they need me, you know what I mean? If somebody calls.
We need you at every meeting. If we don't have a quorum, that's what you.
Yeah, I think the goal is to have you come to every meeting, Lou.
Participate anyway.
Well, I do that anyway.
No, but you should participate anyway, because if somebody's absent, you're up to speed on the case.
So I had Suzanne make a copy of the bylaw, so again, if somebody can't make it, just make a phone call, and, and it's considered an excused absence. If you have four unexcused absences.
Four consecutive ones.
Consecutive ones. You're considered resigned. So we don't want that. We just, so, and I certainly didn't make the bylaw, but I guess we all have to adhere to it, which is.
Well, it kind of makes sense.
It does.
It does. I mean, what the hell?
If I may raise an issue?
Sure, go ahead.
I think it does create an interesting logical issue, because the chairman of the board can never not be excused, because wherever he is, he knows where he is. And if he's not at the, if he's not here, then he certainly knows that he's not here.
Well, I think maybe I would, maybe I'd just contact the vice chair to let him know I'm not coming.
Yeah.
You know?
Who is the vice chair now?
Mike.
Oh, you're going to be the vice chair? That's good.
I have been.
Not, no, not, no.
At least a week.
Okay, week's good. Week's good.
The other thing, the other thing that I wanted to, to discuss was the Mullen Rule, which is part of the reason that last month's case is being reheard in January. The Mullen Rule says that if you don't come to a meeting and you're a voting member, you can watch the video, you can come to the following meeting after the one that you missed, state that I, I watched last month's meeting, and I filed, there's a form in the town clerk's office, and I filled out the form. The form basically says, "I wasn't at November's meeting, but I did watch it on tape, and I'm prepared and ready to vote on this case in the future."
It has to be given to the.
And it has to be brought to the town clerk, and then they ask that you bring one to the next meeting, just say, "I, I fulfill my obligation to the Mullen Rule by watching the film, filling it out with the town clerk, and bringing a copy here." Also, we found out last month that if a member misses two meetings in the same case, the Mullen Rule does not apply. You cannot say, "I watched." If you were at, missed October's meeting, you can't, you can come in November and say, "I watched it, I filled out the paper with the town clerk." But if the meeting in November gets continued to December, the same case, and you don't come in December, you can no longer vote on that.
You don't want to use that Mullen Rule one.
And I didn't know about that. I don't think any of us knew about that, and that came to light last month. So anybody's, you know, can miss a meeting, watch the tape, file with the town clerk, and it's like you never missed a meeting. But if that, if you miss more than one meeting of that particular case, you can't, you can't vote. So I hope, tried to make it as clear as I can, but I, I hope I did.
No, that's fine. But that's a state law?
That's a, that's a state law.
Oh, it's a state law?
No, that's a state law. The Mullen Rule. It's called the Mullen Rule. And quite honestly, Ron, in the past, people have come in and they said, "I wasn't at last month's meeting, but I watched the tape, and I'm up to speed, I'm ready to vote." But unfortunately, that's only part of the, the other part is filing with the town clerk.[1701.04]